Okay. We're still on hold.
You're good.
Okay. Evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to see so many of you from the public present with us at this city council meeting. We're especially grateful to have all of our elected council members present with us as well. And with that, I will officially call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this, the 27th day of July 2017. With that, we'll proceed with our roll call.
Andy Wilson?
Present.
Jason Daley?
Here.
Joe Schei?
Here.
Mike Parsons?
Here.
And Leona Sander Hunter?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Also present. So, as noted, we have a full quorum, so we will now proceed with our place of allegiance. We divide all to please rise. And, Leona, would be about you to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'll proceed with the mayor's report. I'm pleased to report that on July 24th, the planning committee held their first official function with five new planners, four of whom were present, and they were all sworn in. And it was a very productive meeting. We had two officials from the Washington State Department of Commerce come and give them a full short course on city planning, so they're officially trained in their capacity at this moment, and they elected a chairman and a co-chairman. So, it is a great step forward, and I was most impressed with the quality of the individuals on that planning committee. Maybe one of the best that we've had in recent history. So, that is positive development for the city of Vader. I can report that things are going well with the school. The building is scheduled to be delivered on Monday, contrary to some rumors that have been circulated through the city that it's not going to happen.
They may have made, but I didn't get it.
No. Well, I tracked it down to the source, so it comes from a member of the school district themselves, and yet there was misinterpretation, as often happens, when individuals get information that's not exactly accurate. But there are challenges, to say the least, with it. I mean, they're still trying to find the sewer line, and they're going to be reaching out to a member of the community who, we believe, was involved in its installation.
They're looking for the sewer line?
Yeah, they are.
If they have those coming in contact behind, they can tell them where it's exactly with that.
Really? Okay. Then they have another individual. Maybe we'll go with two, but, or we'll talk to you after.
I'll get a call.
What's that? I heard the name, so, yeah. But nonetheless, aside from that, there's some engineering that needs to be done, but we're working with the district to ensure that everything is done according to city guidelines and regulations. So, with that, that would conclude my report. We'll proceed with any council reports or commentary that you might have to share.
I don't know if this is exactly the right time, but regarding Scott's issue with the stop signs, people just horsing through them. I did try to call Superintendent of the Castle Rock Schools to see if he had any plans on maybe doing something there, because that's going to be a main section, but he's on vacation, so I'll be calling back on Monday to see if he has anything in the thought process to help slow that traffic down, since it's going to be right there across area. It's a bee.
It is item number four of the agenda.
Today, the state was out here painting where our stop signs are. Five or six, they were painted, strips to the stop, the stop sign.
That's right.
Yeah.
Good. Okay. That's good to know. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Hearing that, we'll proceed now with the official approval of tonight's agenda. I don't have any changes myself to incorporate, so...
I make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for '07, '07, and 2017.
Okay. Mr. Daley has submitted a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Secuted by Mr. Schei. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is carried. Approval for minutes of our previous city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for July 13, 2017.
Okay. Mr. Parsons has submitted a motion as noted to approve those minutes. Do we have a second?
One second.
Secuted by Leona. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion was unanimous. Voucher approvals.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the 1st of July 2017, amount of $29,482.54, and the end of July 2017, an amount of $11,292, $11,292 cents for the July 2017 total of $40,683.46.
Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve the vouchers in their totals, as he noted. Do we have a second?
One second.
Mr. Daley has submitted a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? The motion is carried. It's now our opportunity to hear a couple of special reports. The first involves the Lewis County proposal, Lewis County Sheriff's Department proposal for law enforcement and municipal court services for 2018. They presented a proposal to us earlier, and when we presented the concept to the council, you agreed to invite Sheriff Rob Snaza and the Lewis County Sheriff and Mr. Jonathan Meyer, the Lewis County Prosecutor, to come and give a formal presentation to you. So, that is why they're here. We're grateful to acknowledge their presence with us. So, do you have a thought?
I'm going to make a motion, but if you want to let the sheriff make his presentation first, I'll let you.
Okay. Yeah. So, with that, we divide you to, however you want to make that presentation, to come to the foyer, or, I mean, the podium.
The sheriff asked that I go first, so...
Okay.
He has the guns.
He's got it, yeah.
So, I have a few handouts. Actually, I just have a handout, and enough for everybody. So, my name is Jonathan Meyer. I'm the Lewis County Prosecutor. Thank you for having me. This is a copy of the letter that I presented back to Mayor Smith back in June regarding a request of my office potentially taking over the municipal court services. And what I had proposed was an outline of the way I saw it potentially working, which I think would be advantageous to the city. And the reason I think would be advantageous to the city is that right now, a municipal court has to be very wary about budget. Along with Sheriff Snaza's proposal, I think that we can help protect the city's budget and, in fact, lower some of the expenses that this city potentially faces. Absolutely. Absolutely. And I have a few more in case you run out. So, the proposal that I put forth in the, in the letter is that my office would take over the handling of criminal cases for the city of Vader, and what we would charge is $150 per case that's filed. And if you look over the historical numbers for the past five years, that would average about $2,100 per year for my office to handle the cases. And the reason that I put it at $150, I think that's a fair amount, and I also believe that it would, it would encourage... I did it on only the cases filed. I didn't do it on all cases referred, because I want to make sure that we get to see all the cases, and so we would only charge on the cases filed. I spoke with Judge Buzzard, who is the presiding judge of Lewis County District Court. He is the son of your current municipal court judge, Stephen Buzzard, and they would charge $65 per case filed for their court services, which, over the last five years, would average about $870 per year for their services. That would include all court services, including probation and things of that nature. Fines would go back to the city. The only thing that wouldn't go to the city is jail fees if they were ordered, restitution, mandatory money would go to the state, and then the cost of probation. All of those would be imposed upon the defendant, so it would be no extra money other than the $65 alder. Now, the jail, I know part of Sheriff Snaza's proposal would be that if the county continues to provide law enforcement services, that would also include jail fees and the cost of housing inmates in the jail. And quite frankly, that's a huge benefit to the city, because right now, it runs about $90 a day to house an inmate in the jail, and that doesn't include medical expenses or anything of that nature. Just last night, an inmate had to be transported to Harborview. Imagine that medical expense for a city the size of Vader. That would be very expensive, obviously. Now, there is another proposal kind of in that letter as well, and that's for infractions. According to Judge Buzzard, the district court would charge $25 per infraction that is filed and handled by the district court, and so over the last five years, that would average about $305 per year that the city would pay to the district court. There is not a proposal from my office for infractions, simply because some cities choose not to be represented on infractions. Some cities choose a hybrid map model where if an attorney appears on an infraction, then my office would appear, which is currently the way we handle it in the county. So, if the sheriff's office issues a citation, say, in Randall, and they appear with an attorney, then my office would appear. And if that were the case, we would only charge $25 per case that we appear on, depending on what kind of model you folks choose. And again, if we appeared on every infraction, that would be an average of $305 if we looked at the historical data. So, that's my proposal, and I think that it could certainly increase the public safety of Vader. What I experienced in private practice is that oftentimes, municipal court judges and municipal court prosecutors are very wary about how much jail time they seek, simply because that impacts the bottom line of the city. With this proposal and the proposal that the sheriff is going to put forward, that takes that concern out, and so I think that you would most likely see increased accountability for people that decide to commit crimes within the city limits of Vader. So, I'm certainly open for any questions, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, and from anybody out here as well.
I was just curious. The money that is slated here to come back to the city, where is that currently going now? Is it all going to the county?
No. So, right now, Vader has municipal court. I don't know anything about that contract. I don't know how much you get charged for prosecution and defense or anything along those lines, but theoretically, I would imagine that you guys still get fines back to you.
Okay.
But I don't know what your opinion is.
Okay. And based on the hypothetical number to the five-year term, what could the city see in revenue coming back based upon that same sort of model?
And that's going to be difficult, because it's going to depend on what type of crime, because, and it's also going to depend on what type of plea agreement is re-shifted one or whether court imposes, because that can be different for every case. Unfortunately, unfortunately, depending on how you look at it, appellate courts have greatly limited the amount of fines that can be imposed now. It's going to depend on the ability of the person to earn, and so we've actually seen at the county level, we've seen our revenue go down as a result of our normal income as far as normal court fines and fees and things of that nature, simply because the court is kind of handcuffing what they can impose.
Okay. Any questions, please, council?
I have no questions, sir, but I like to tell the citizens here, I've been here 33 years as mayor and city councilman. That young fellow back there, Mr. Snaza, was nothing but a kid patrol officer many years ago. Here he is, the sheriff today, and I've made several motions that I want to teach you people. I'd do the same thing tonight when the time is appropriate, commit the motion that we have stated for this time, Sheriff's Department.
Well, I appreciate that, and certainly, we are, we want to do everything we can to help Lewis County, and that includes all the cities within. I will say that Sheriff Snaza was actually a witness in one of my cases, because as a 19-year-old kid, he worked at Yardbirds, and we actually had a case that dealt with him when he worked at Yardbirds, and we had to call him as a witness. So, yeah. His commitment to Lewis County is certainly a long one, so thank you very much.
Look at him today. There he is, the sheriff of Lewis County.
Well, I had dark hair back then, but... First of all, thank you, guys. It's good to see everybody here. I apologize. I don't come to these meetings often enough. I know Sergeant Cheeseman does, and we've had this contract for a long time. In fact, before I became sheriff, I worked a lot of the contracts here, and that's our commitment. So, over the years, when the contracts were in place, we kept thinking of what services are provided, what can we do better, and what can we do to go after those individuals who commit crimes? So often that we see small cities, we'll use Winlock as an example, because they still administer court, and we see Naperville. So, when you arrest somebody, you look at what can the city afford? The city of Vader could not afford a second person arrested for DUI and a suspended first. That would break the city financially, because what the judge would probably end up doing is giving them... We have people sitting on suspens, doing 90 days. We have people sitting there doing a full year, 300 days. So, Jonathan gave a number of about... It costs about $93 a day to house somebody. We generally charge, without a contract, we charge about 90, or 65, 66 bucks. It's right in there. If even he took that and he did, you know, half of that time, it costs. So, what we started thinking about is what we could do, what we could do as the sheriff's office to help the city of Vader. And one of the reasons I brought in Mr. Meyer was because the fact of a municipal court is not working for the sheriff's office. It's not that I've lost faith in them. That's not the case. It's just become kind of foretakin' people, it's taken some time out of what we're doing here. And one of the things is, I presented to the mayor was, we got three options, folks. You can have the sheriff's office, if that's what you choose. That's up to the city. You could contract with another city. You could contract with Toledo. Or you could decide that we don't want any police services, and the sheriff's office would respond if 911 was called. If there is an emergency, we'll still come. We're not going to abandon the city. So, if you look at it financially, there are three options, and it's nothing, it's not personal, it's business. But what we did is we came up with this. The sheriff's office has an increase. We haven't renewed the contract in two years. So, what we committed to the mayor was, every two years, we give a 5% increase. That 5% increase takes up to four... Generally, every year, employee costs go up about 2.5%. That doesn't cost, that doesn't mean what, the car costs with the fuel costs. Well, we do the 5%. That's just on deputy costs. We're not even including any vehicles or anything like that. And so, what we did is we looked at a proposal. If we do 10% this year, we do a 10% increase, it's going to cost about $79,200. It's a 10% increase over what the city's been paying for. However, with that comes the fact that the Lewis County Sheriff's Office will take any and all inmates and not charge the city. I'm going to take it and look at it as a contract as whole. So, let's say we get somebody, and it's generally misdemeanor crimes, gross misdemeanor crimes, to where it may cost... Suspense costs a lot of money. If we have someone getting caught on a suspended, it's going to cost you some money. And so, the way we looked at it is, we'll take the burden off. I know it seems like a lot of money, but it's for two-year contract, and then what we can do for $79,200, we assume all debt regarding the inmates. We book on everything. If you're a suspended driver, you're going to get booked. If you're a DUI, you're going to get booked. Other cities don't do that. What they'll do is they'll do a site release. I get the reason for that, is financial reasons. I don't want a city to be hamstrung for the simple fact is, is if one person gets arrested, they have to broker a deal with the judge or the city attorney so that they don't do the time that they deserve. We all know good people make bad decisions sometimes. I'm looking at those other individuals that continue to make bad decisions, that need to be in a facility, that need to say, that the judge can say, listen, I'm giving you 90 days. Last time I gave you two days on a suspended, we asked you not to drive. More and more times, we're seeing more people out with suspended drivers. Now, I think that's unfortunate, because it's due to financial reasons a lot of times. I can't control it, but we have a policy, because if you're a suspended driver, you're going to jail. You're going to get booked. It is what it is. A DUI is going to get booked. But can you imagine a domestic violence or something like that going on, where somebody says, well, I can't afford, I don't want to book him, because it's going to cost us? If you don't think those conversations happen in other agencies, I would tell you, you're amiss, because they happen. I've witnessed that. I've witnessed other city agencies saying, well, I can't book him, because we can't afford it. I can't cite him, so I'm going to cite him for this, because we can't afford it, because we're going to... The revenue's going to come in the same. Revenues aren't going to change, that I see anything changing on the revenue side. I just want to be upfront and honest about this, and saying, hey, listen, the sheriff's office wants to go district court. It benefits us. Selfishly, it does benefit us, because then we can charge everything into district court. However, if the city chooses to go with their own law enforcement, or they choose another city, we're okay with them. And if they choose not to do a contract at all, Lewis County Sheriff's Office will still be there when you call us. We're not going to leave you. We're going to be there when you need us the most. We won't give up the on you that way. So, those are options that you all have, and, you know, I think we provide a good service. We got some great men and women out there. We got a lot of new deputies out there that maybe haven't seen out before, and you're going like, I've never seen that person before, but they're there, and, you know, we want to thank you guys, because you guys have allotted us the opportunity to come down here and work this area. The South County is getting inundated more and more with activity, and how we deal with those issues is by being visible. You are helping us pay to have a deputy down in the south end being visible, but not only as you, as homeowners, or whoever else, the other neighbors, at least you have a patrol car floating around, whether it's during the day or... Even when you're not doing the hours, you still have deputies floating down this area. So, we're providing a service. And if we're not, we need to be called on. You know, you need to call us up and say, hey, this is what you agreed to. We want to see this changed. If you want to see hours changed, we work with that. We work with Ken and Jill, and then we talk about the hours and the times we provide, you know? Those are things that we're very open about, and I think Sergeant Cheeseman's been working with you guys on that.
Very close to that.
If not, then we'll have to fix some things. But the offer on the table right now for $79,200 is a 10% increase. It's the same coverage. The caveat is, we go district court, and the fact is, is that the Lewis County Sheriff's Office absorbs the cost for all jail fees. Now, you can have good years where no one goes to jail, and you say, well, Sheriff, last year, we didn't pay that much. It just takes one arrest. That's all it takes. One arrest, and you can be paying a lot of money, especially medical. If someone had a medical issue, if they're arrested on a misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor charge, and they have medical issues, Lewis County doesn't pay for it. City of Vader would pay for that. So, those are things to think about, especially if you have mental health issues coming along the way. Mental health is really big. We have a lot of issues. I mean, right now, we have another city that arrested somebody on a robbery, but really what happened is, you know, he has mental health issues. He's up at Harborview, because he tried to rip his own eye out.
Oh.
So, I mean, those are issues that we see on a regular, I mean, that we see that. Can you imagine the city of Chehalis paying that? Well, that goes through the Lewis County Sheriff's Office. We're going to pay that bill, and that's just the way it is. So, I just want to open up for more conversations, but I want to thank the council for, for working with us over the years. I think we've had a great relationship. I hope we continue. It's been very open, and it's been a great relationship, so we want to thank you. Does anybody have any questions of me? Go ahead.
It's not a question. It's a kudo. Can I do that?
You can give me it. I'll take them, because I need more of them.
First of October, we have been here for 11 years, and I have not seen patrol cars ever as much as you guys are patrolling.
Can you see the striking?
Down on our street, I'm just talking about our street, you know?
Yeah.
No time to hurry, and it's, you never know when.
Yeah. I come down here all the time, too. I mean, I don't advertise. I do a lot of... I love to come down through here. I was down here Sunday, driving through, checking the area, but, you know, our guys enjoy this as much. I think we spend some time down in Channant Valley once in a while, and, you know, solved the burglary on the corner there, which was awesome. You know, it was local people, but that's because we were working this area, and...
You were quick to a cat fight the other night, too, at the Squatters House. Whoa!
Go ahead, sir.
I built the city hall with the city's council approval of $25,000, about $24,800 to do it, but what happened to the five jailbirds that I had to labor to build this place?
Well, they eventually got out on good behavior. I mean, that's been a while.
I would have never done it if it hadn't been for the five...
You know, and the inmate labor is awesome, because a lot of times, again, good people make some bad decisions. That's not, we recognize that. We've got great people in there that live near us, that live next to us, that are our neighbors, our friends. I mean, they just, bad decisions. But when we give them the opportunity to be trustee status, I mean, they love to come out. They love to work. They love to paint. Anything they can get out, and usually what we try to do is, I hope you gave them a Big Mac or something, and a Coke or something to go with it.
We gave them. My wife made lunch every day for them. Plus, we took donations for cigarettes.
There you go.
They sat out here and smoked their cigarettes.
That'd be a great thing. I'd like that.
Yes. Yeah. Any questions? I'm here. Just ask away, if you want to ask any other questions, any concerns. Go ahead, sir.
I was just, with the numbers that were given over this five-year period, is that you kind of using that as a gauge?
Yeah. We were using that as a gauge, because when Prosecutor Meyer and I were getting together on this, we wanted to make sure that it was, there were some good, fair numbers. There's accurate numbers, because everybody was always saying, what are the numbers? Now, we have seen over the last couple of years, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jonathan, that we've seen a decrease in arrests and such, but I don't know if that's because we're just, we're doing such a great job, or if it's just the trend right now. I just know the other night, one of our deputies got a DUI right here. I mean, work in the detail, got a DUI. Now, if the city, if that goes in this, you know, you pay the jail fees. You'll pay the jail fees, but you'll get whatever fees are out of that. But sometimes it's easier if you go county, because you know that person's going to be booked. You know, you're not going to worry about it. You don't have to have your city attorney talking to you and say, boy, he really needs a point system. He's got to do 100 days, or he's got to do 365. He's going to do a year and a day, because it's his second DUI or third DUI. You don't have to worry about that. That worry is taken away. That, that's off your shoulders, so...
I have one question.
Go ahead.
What we found statistically, the drug use and drug problems that we have for this area?
Well, I don't see them going down, and the reason is, is because we have Longview coming up, and we have the north coming in. Lewis County is a hub for a lot of things. We're still addressing it. What we're seeing is, we still see high unemployment rate, high poverty rate, a lot of people not working right now, and so what they tend to turn to is criminal activity. We've seen an increase in burglaries involving weapons being stolen. You know, 15 years ago, we wouldn't see the type of burglaries that we're seeing today, just because most of the convicted felons knew that if you stole the weapon, that it was going to be third strike or whatever it might be. I don't, I see an increase in that going on. Property crimes are still there. I think our vehicle prices were up more than anything recently, but we are, drug usage is still there, but we've got two sources now. We're back. We've got our sheriff's enforcement team that work down here, that actually solved the burglary down here. So, we have SET, which is sheriff's enforcement team, and then we have the drug unit. So, those are everything that this city gets, and we've dealt with some individuals that live in the city, and we still, we still keep an eye on others, but we're very in tune of what's going on in this area. It's just not Vader. It's your neighbors right outside the county on West Side Highway and other... and other places that still are part of Vator.
Because there's certain areas, you know, there's drug...
Sure.
And I just haven't seen law enforcement to have hit it as hard as I wish they would.
Right. The other issue is we're shorthanded and we don't have the deputies that we once had. And so, what you're talking about, those areas, those are the same areas that we have all over the county. I can point out two-hundred other areas that are just like the one, so to spread them out. And just to give you a little statistical information, in nineteen-ninety-five, we had more deputies than we do right now and we're doing almost twice the work. So, I mean, it's there, but we're addressing it and that's our commitment is the sheriff's enforcement team and then when we work together with the Centrales Chehalis to bring in this task force. It's not funded by the federal government, there's no restrictions, so we go and do wherever we need to, which is really important. And we're getting a lot of agencies on board, which is DEA and the U.S. Marshal Service, are in this task force now and it's not funded by anybody. We fund it ourselves and that's our commitment. So, there's a lot going on. Unfortunately, you don't get to see a lot, but, you know, you can always ask me, you can take me aside and quiz me all you want. That's what I'm here for.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Thank you.
The council is not necessary to make any decisions tonight. This was your introductory presentation regarding their proposed budget. In a month or so, when we begin to deliberate on the two thousand and eighteen budget, is when you can kinda tear into it and dig a little deeper. But since I work as closely as I do with sheriff's officials, I would echo, it's not just the vehicle that you see, which is comforting. It's the competency of the officer inside it that is an intangible that we enjoy. We are regularly approached by other smaller communities who would invite us to join with them, but there's a number of factors that the council has weighed in and that's one of them, not to mention the price. This has still been on, been in this position long enough to have dealt with our own private force and I don't want to overstate the bargain that it is since we're in a negotiated process here, but it's hard for me to hide the appreciation I have for their services. So, with that having been said, thank you again. And we recognize the presence of Gary Stamper, our distinguished county commissioner who's over our area. We're always very grateful to have you with us.
I've got a couple of things I wanted to talk about, but I'll just wait till the very end there.
Well, knowing that your schedule is such and we have quite a...
Okay, just a couple of things. Again, my name is Gary Stamper, I'm county commissioner, District Three, and of course, commissioner for all the entire county. So, we meet quite regularly, as a matter of fact, all the time. But a couple of things there, and again, one thing, and I don't know if Jill, I didn't pass this information on to you, but I know that we secured a grant for the water reservoir tank. I think that's, that's coming down the line, but it's not gonna happen until next year because of the timing of the grant application, so...
But the grant funding is official?
Yeah, is that a little more...
Is it sufficient?
Eric will come and address that, though, so I think that's fairly good news.
Well, that's a startling disclosure.
Secondly, I've been driving these streets for a while now, trying to figure out, the county now is gonna put a ballot box in for the city of Vator. And Larry Grob, I've been helping him out a little bit and we're looking for specific spots. And I know I talked to Jill and I think I talked to some of your wonderful citizens there and we're trying to figure out where would be the best spot for that to be. And we were thinking that probably down by the post office somewhere, but we want it on city property. And so, I don't know what that looks like, but I think we can have some discussions on that and see what your feelings are. And we're gonna put it wherever you think it's the best. And so, so we're just trying to get some input. We're kind of up against a time crunch a little bit, but not severe, severe yet, but we need to get movement on, so that's the other reason, so...
We do have blueprints for the development of the street improvement projects.
That's, and I understand that Jill, and I had a nice conversation about that, too. So, I just wanted to get it out there and then we're gonna, I'll bring Larry back and we'll do some other things there and just put it out there for you to think about and then we'll go from there, so...
That is fantastic. Thank you for that. All righty. Well, then with that, let's proceed with our agenda. It's now time for our public comment.
No, we have another special report.
Oh, of course. Thank you, Rob. Yes, we do have the second presentation. You'll invite Judy Costello to take the podium.
Thank you very much for having me tonight. My name is Judy Costello. I provided the council with what I call pop-up commercial retail space. Presently, I believe that it's okay to have these small buildings at your residence, et cetera. But because we are a community with no retail space, it's hard to bring business into town and rent something. And so, my thought was, all across the United States, they're doing pop-up buildings. And these would be located and decorated and et cetera on different private property. Like, I have space on my lot for three of them next to my building and the community center. Carol Broom has space on her lot. I believe in two thousand and three, the city got a grant, I might be off by a year or two, and in that grant, they drew this picture on the very back of your hand that I gave you. And they put in their space and detailed in that report a lot about no commercial space and how, you know, building was needed. And so, this was just kind of my thought at this time. I guess what my big thought is, is since we allow it, the question is the rental part of it. Because if I have three on there, I should like to be able to rent them out to Leona for the weekend if she sells whatever. And then Ken, if he has his farmer's market, and then Jason, if he does whatever. And that is, I don't believe, in our world yet. I don't think there's any ordinance that covers that and probably should, I don't know.
I don't think it'd be impossible for the council to do that.
And I kinda, I did a little presentation thing on the second page and I'm thinking this is more, it's temporary and it would be from May to December because we don't wanna deal with snow, heating the building, lighting the building, any of the above. This would be merely come, unlock your little French doors and walk in, bring out your wares, sell them and walk away. There's no camping, there's overnight, no overnight sleeping, and there's no house rental kind of thing going on here. It's strictly for commercial retail space, so... And I think probably one of my biggest things is, crafters typically do not have to have UBI numbers. They are just floating around there, go to farmer's markets and et cetera, and they typically don't have UBI numbers. That is a strict thing that City of Vator has in order to get your business license. So, this is another scenario when I throw out to you is would be, the property owner would possibly have the umbrella and then they would buy, they would carry, like I have a UBI number, but everybody underneath in these little buildings would come in and buy their own business license. And then possibly, I was thinking maybe a yearly license if Leona only wants to come maybe one weekend out of this season. She's not gonna be there every day, so she would be, just kind of a thought. I was just trying to throw as much information out there for you to think about. And again, they're portable. They come pre-made or whatever and walked on your site and then they just are picked up and relocated. So, it's not, so if our needs change, if I got the publisher's clearinghouse that Andy's waiting for instead and was able to build my own building, then I could put my own structure up, then I'd move my three little buildings and have my own structure. But it's just kind of a way of bypassing the fact that we have no commercial rental, so therefore, it's hard to promote business to come to Vator, whether it be small, large or whatever. So, that's my presentation.
Certainly, I know I speak for the council and we're looking for innovative ways to stimulate some commercial development in this community. Could be a spark, a catalyst for such a thing. Do you have a comment from the public?
So, what would be the next step? What would you need from the council? Would we need a workshop or something?
Yes. Because I'm ready to purchase two of my buildings right now.
Is there anything against, any ordinance against that, or?
I kind of, see, I went around, I went around town and we already have ten, and I didn't try very hard, of these buildings in town right now. And some as early as last year arrived, but they're not commercial.
Sure.
So, there's where...
Plus our two.
So, there's where it is.
Well, this is a presentation and the council is free to make whatever executive decisions you want.
I'm just wondering if anyone in the public is like, "Oh, yeah, I would love to do this or do that and like maybe sell baked goods in or something like that."
You know, I have not, it's really difficult to market this concept without being able to do it, so that's why I'm here. Because there's a couple people in town right now that want to do this on the commercial level. And at that point, then it could be anything from coffee to who knows what.
Oh, coffee on West Side, bacon's on...
I know, Leona, I know this is like...
Well, you have to read, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, do we have to hold that to you?
So, the things that I think we would need to check on, and the reason that I haven't already checked into this is because it costs us money to have our planners and stuff review things, so I didn't have the review until council heard it. And if council decides, "Yeah, we're interested in this, go ahead and spend the money to have somebody review it and find out if that's even something that we can do." They'll be able to check state laws and regulations or whatever and how all that would have to work and what type of businesses and that kind of thing. So, I'm thinking that the bakery and the coffee sounds really great, but you need water, you need power to do that kind of stuff. And she's saying, "No water, no power, no sewer."
Exactly.
They're just more like storage.
It's, it would be a...
Yeah, I'm sorry if I can't really... That's okay. It'd be more, if I'm understanding correctly, you're saying it'd be storage of their wares and then they can basically open it up kind of like a garage sale type.
Exactly.
In Leona's scenario, it would literally be a bake sale. That's how she would get her doughnuts. That's how she would get her cupcake. They'd have to have their commercial bakery at their house or some other location or purchasing them or, you know, something like that, bringing their stuff to the site.
And as far as a coffee shop or any of that type of thing, depending on who the person was that was going to do that, they would probably go into the full-blown water sewer, et cetera. I'm just kinda speaking from my perspective of my three that I'm interested in putting in. And obviously, public bathrooms, that kind of thing.
You said Winlock does something under the Wind Group, do you know how that works?
They have a blanket business license with the city of Winlock. And the Wind Group does, and their farmer's market on Saturday is all underneath that. All the vendors are under that scenario. And I don't know this, but possibly Toledo works the same way. I don't know that.
That would be a place to start if we could look at what Winlock's doing.
Hey, Judy?
Yes, Mike.
Where, do you know whereabouts in Sacramento that is?
Downtown Sacramento. Are you there?
I'm here, yeah.
You can go to Tulsa, Oklahoma, you can go to downtown Sacramento, you can go up to Seattle, which they're very popular right now. And they're just called pop-up businesses.
Okay, we'll go tomorrow and look for them.
Yeah, it's probably an old Sacramento.
Yes, old Sacramento, and it's just kind, it's like, it's called cluster shopping where you just walk in and out of each individual little...
San Francisco.
I bet they would, yeah.
Like a country.
Well, all right, they're most intriguing, but this is thought-provoking.
One more cupcake thing.
Are you thinking like maybe even people, instead of doing yard sales in their yard, they could do it right there, rent it for a weekend and do like some yard sale thing?
If Jason had tools and he wanted to empty his garage and bring it up there, he would rent that space, there would be his tool sale going on, and then he would, he'd take it and go. That's what it's about.
If he didn't sell everything.
Just pick it up and go, that's why it's called pop-up. And with the website and everything I have and a lot of other people in town, it would be an excellent opportunity for advertising that. Tomorrow, Leona's Bakery will be there, you know, for like a week or three days or, and that's usually the way it's done, is like put out there in a mass advertising. The pop-up shop is there for only three days for the weekend. It's a little, it's a little more than we normally do in Vator, so you gotta wrap your mind around it.
One last comment.
Yeah, I was just curious how revenue is generated for the city by the project. It seems like you're renting everything and you're renting it and it's kind of your thing or something. I guess I don't understand.
Well, I see it as bringing business into town, hoping that somebody will come in and build an actual building. That's where I want this to go, is for someone to, I wanna build a building next to me. But right now, I have to be able to figure out, is there a market out there for people to come into town to rent these spaces? So, this is my idea of, you know, little pop-up shops to see if there is. So, as far as revenue to the city, the one business license or ever how they work out the business, that part of the revenue.
Yeah, typically like saying, the restaurant or the store, is they collect sales taxes?
UBI taxes, well, I pay, so, you know...
So, is that something that would occur with these places?
I don't think so because they're gonna be little shoppers and they won't have UBI numbers to do their quarter lease or anything on. These are like garage sale people or that type of thing. I don't see that as, I haven't got, I haven't thought of that one. That's an excellent question, I don't know.
I'm sure there'll be other questions as we dive into this. Okay, well, then, thank you very much, Judy.
You're very welcome.
Thank you all very much for inviting me to that.
One thing about this guy, it's not gonna cost the city any money, so if it brings more people in...
Maybe have lunch or two. That's for your business. Okay, well, then with that, let's proceed now.
I think the council wants to...
Of course. No, Jill just points out then wisely that is there a council action that you'd like to put on in the future agenda, for example? Or should we authorize research with our planner, Gary Cooper?
Yeah, I think so. I think we should consult the planner and see what, see what he says initially.
Okay. I see lots of consent along those lines, so we will set that in motion.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna stay here because I'm next. Yeah, she's first on the list.
One additional comment, time is slipping by.
Just a question in reference to what you was asking. In order to do anything new in the city limits, does it always have to have some profitability of taxes to the city or revenue to the city?
I don't think so.
I just found that confusing.
Well, it's nice if it does.
Yeah, it's nice, but eventually, any improvement brings new, different, which then you get some revenue.
Looks like Jason says, I mean, if you get people here, they'll maybe shop at others that are already here, like the restaurant, J and G. Okay, and with that, let's proceed to public comment, and then you have three.
Judy Costello, seven oh nine A Street. First off, I'd like to thank Leona for taking on the task of the website and what a beautiful job she's done, very informative. I've checked it out regularly. Number two, citywide yard sale is Saturday, August the fifth. We have over twenty-five right now signed up, so this will be a booming year. And you don't have to sign up. If you wanna do your yard sale, I think most of the streets are pretty much covered right now, so somebody would be on your street on the map, so not to worry. And I'll be putting signages on all of the streets, directing people all over town, and then I will be going and taking them down on Saturday night. Good Yard Sale Edgewood.
What date was that again?
Saturday, the fifth.
You said you had that somewhere, Judy?
I do, the maps will be located on the corner of A and five oh six, right at my house. The maps will be located on the corner of A and 506, right at my house. And they're on a big stand and they have a big sign that says maps.
Oh, okay.
So they're real easy to find. And last but not least...
Do you have a map to find the maps?
A map to find the map? I can get you a map to find the map. Our community barbecue scheduled for Saturday, August the 19th. Everyone, please put that on your calendar from 11:00 to 2:00. We will have burgers, dogs, and potluck. Warden Park, council people are invited to come and speak. I've also invited the Lions, the Masons, and I haven't gotten my invitation out yet to vision Vader, but I will do that so they can come and do their thing, and a invitation to Kevin. And other than that, we're scheduled for that. Everything's on a roll. Will there be a problem getting the barbecuer from the jail? And I will make sure that it has propane, but we probably need to look at it to make sure that it's...
Yeah, it's functioning. I think it's in the storage building.
Oh, you think it might be in the storage? Okay, well, I'll maybe communicate with John and see.
Yeah, get in touch with him.
If it's here or there. Okay. All right, perfect. Other than that, I'm done. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Okay, another presentation.
Cindy Radka.
Cindy Radka, 1027th Street. I'm not gonna complain tonight. Okay, that's kind of a lie, but I'm gonna start off with something good. Councilwoman Hunter, you're doing a great job on the website, very reactive, getting things changed and updated. I've already given it, sent it out to people who've used it and to find out what's going on in town, so thank you very much for taking that on. The only other thing I have is a couple months ago at a workshop, councilperson Daly asked that somebody, I think it was city clerk, bring back information on what other options are out there for our building inspection people, building and planning, or I'm not sure exactly how you worded it, but I haven't seen that happen yet. It was toward the end of the meeting and he said, well, maybe we can look at other options. I know that Winlock is still struggling with what they're gonna do. Currently, they're still with Napa Vine. Their biggest issue is cost, as it is with any city. So I'd like that, that request from Councilwoman Daly to actually be worked on and other options be brought to the city council to review, especially with the budget coming up, and look at what the current system is costing the city and what other proposals would be, or are there less expensive if possible for building inspections? And that is it.
Okay, then, excellent. Thank you for that. With that, let's proceed now with our official city business. Item number one, council to discuss funding of stormwater drainage maintenance. And so you recall, you were invited to examine our budget for 2017, to see if you might find some wiggle room in some of the line item in the budget. There you go. So I've turned the time over to the council to share with whatever you found.
And these are the projects here.
These are the projects that John gave us as the ones that are most concerned right now.
Do we have any estimates on, from anywhere yet on my comps?
No. No. We just have a list at this point. That was all I could get by Tuesday when the council packets needed to be out, so I have a list explaining what needs to be done. I have no idea how much it would cost. And that's kind of what, my understanding was that council was gonna look at this and see what they thought John could do himself, or what, how you guys wanted to go about handling this. We don't have the equipment to do it. Anything, any equipment for him to do it would need to be granted or purchased.
A lot of this, I think, the jetting out and things like that could, would be used by the fire truck. I know that's one thing that can be, you know, use the fire hose to clean out the overthunderneath the roads. It's one thing that they also suggested come Winlock. Tutan and I were doing that. The sink down 7th Street was to possibly float the fire hose down it to see if there's any kind of something on the other side that might happen. But as far as like core funding of it, I know in the past, many, many, many times, we've always drew on and, in needed times, we've always drew on our park. I, I know that the only thing that I've ever heard since, and my, on this year so far, has been a load of park dust, so I know that there's probably still a pretty good chunk of change in there, so we can get some of this started if that's...
Well, a little bit on storm drain. I see a lot of them, and 90% of the storm drain are clay tiles that were put in here in the 18, 1900s. And that's gonna be very expensive to take and dig up all those clay tiles and put a new storm drain in.
Well, a lot of the ones that I've seen are the, are the, the metal ones, and they're just rusted and they're collapsed and they're filled in. You know, there's really kind of no saving them because they're so, they're just disintegrated.
Well, just like, yeah, like the ones at the post office, that's nothing but clay tile there.
So, I don't wanna interrupt anybody.
Go ahead.
Maybe the county could give us a big grant.
Lean on the county commissioner. Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So I was going through and this expenditure, state audit costs, has that, is that a, Jill, is that a fee at the end of the year? $4,100?
Yes, we are supposed to have an audit and we have to have the money to pay for that.
Okay. The ones with the 0%, we're already halfway through the year, so can we start pulling some of those that we have not used yet?
Possibly, depending on what they, what they are.
Special event insurance, we have $1,000 budgeted there and we haven't used it at all yet. Do we have any special events that we're planning on using?
We don't at this time. We had the 4th of July was the one, and we're still okay in that line item. So yeah, the special event insurance, yeah, that's something that could be used.
What was that one? Interlocal callouts under law enforcement?
Yes, that's another one that could be used.
That can be used?
Yes.
Okay, so that's $3,000. We're halfway through the year, so $1,500 there.
I'm still trying to find interlocal, oh, there they are, okay.
This is for medical costs?
I wouldn't touch that because you never know when you need it, as Sheriff Snazza was saying, you never know when you're gonna get a bill for a prisoner who was injured. And so that's kind of our, our pot in case.
My, my thinking on that is, one, the year's half over, two, $1,000 really isn't gonna do anything anyway.
Yeah, it's like three days in jail.
Well, it's not, it's not for jail costs, it's for...
That's for medical.
We've received...
So that's a ride in the ambulance.
Right. We've received bills for several thousand. The idea in my mind for that prisoner medical cost is to build that up over a couple of years so that we have a pot.
But if we go with this other thing, we won't have to worry about that.
That's true. That's true.
The, down further, I think, I'm on page about five, the road maintenance supplies STP funds?
Oh, in the road maintenance supply STP funds, yes. That can only be used for road repair.
Okay, so that was the roads after we tore them up to fix the drains, right?
I don't think so. I'm not sure. I could check on it, but I don't...
We can tap into that to pay for at least the fixing up the roads?
Because that's, that's money that the county holds and only releases when we provide them with a, an approvable project. And it's a road, road maintenance is what that's for. So I don't, I don't know that they would offer, I don't know, I can check. It doesn't hurt to ask, right?
We have $1,000 for tractor maintenance?
Uh huh. And we need new tires on the tractor.
We need it yet?
We need new tires on the tractor.
Okay.
So that's pretty expensive.
Tires probably have $300, $400 a week.
But you found $4,000, pretty easy there, that we could probably use, which would go a long way for getting rental equipment and stuff.
There's the sewer audit cost, what is that for?
Again, that's for the audit, the state audit, it just, the portion, a portion of it has to be paid for out of the sewer fund as well. And none of the sewer money can be touched for this. None of the, if you look at the bars code, the number code that's on the left, any of them that start with 407 cannot be touched for this project. They can only be used for sewer.
Any of the 407s, you said?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, but along those lines, reading this expenditure, that's what we need to look at, correct? There's a bunch of, how do they, what's being council training? I think we're all super smart and we don't really need too much point training. Maybe I'm wrong. There's a hundred dollars there.
Mike, you've done some good homework. $4,100 so far, I think.
If we rent the equipment, can John run it? Can John dig out those ditches?
Yes. One thing that he mentioned is that some of the projects would probably require him to have at least a second person with him to help him and to, especially if he ends up being in the roadway, he may need someone to help him redirect traffic. And usually it's a two-person job, some of those jobs are.
And can I, anybody from the city, or does that have to be insurance purposes? Does that have to be somebody?
I don't know. I know volunteer, city volunteers can go, can be covered under the city's insurance. So, yeah, I don't, I don't see why they wouldn't be able to. But we may need to pay somebody to do that, too. I don't know. I don't know if somebody wants to volunteer their time to help and anyways, we'd have to discuss that.
My experience is that we probably could find someone to do this.
Jury, jury compensation?
Jury compensation, yeah. That's another one of those, we never know when there's gonna be a jury trial and when we do. Yeah, we found that out a couple of years ago, that we had to pay juries if they're a jury trial. And if a person requests a jury trial, we have to do it and we have to pay for the jury. So that's another one of those that we have there in case we need it. It's no fun when you don't have the money and you get a bill that you weren't expecting.
Well, this council feel like there's some potential for hope with the $4,000 approximately that is available. Would you like us to now explore the cost of rental equipment and looking at the projects that you've got presented before you?
After we do this years ago, the contractor, which was storm drains two plus water lines and sewer line for the equipment, he's gonna need a small backhoe at least, period.
For sure.
And then he's gonna need at least one helper.
Right. Yep.
And so you're looking at some, some money.
Yep.
Well, I never happened to our old backhoe, I don't know. That used to be on the tractor.
It's still...
Yeah. It was sold. It was, it was traded, it was traded years ago for...
It's a long time ago.
Yeah. It was part of a payment for somebody to do some work for the city. That's where it is.
Well, can we get a, can we get a, an estimate on the cost of the rental equipment and the replacement culvert that he, that he needs?
Yep. We can do that.
Does that have to be a motion?
No, I can just put, if you guys just direct me to do that, that's fine. Rental equipment costs and the culvert supplies.
Ready to make the motion?
You don't need to make a motion to tell me to put together information, so do that. So I won't have...
Well, you know, if it's, if it'd be easier that we just say, you know, do some research and then if you find what it's, you know, what we need, just use the allocated funds
that, you know.
Well, I think that we probably ought to make it more official, prevent an influence.
Yeah, if you wanna allocate funds, then I would definitely do a motion and say, go ahead and use that $4,100 towards the project, or if you want to, if you want to see more information back before making that decision.
Should we see, should we see those budget changes in writing first before we make a motion?
I don't, we don't have to do an official budget amendment to do that, because none of these were reserved funds. These are funds that are, yes, we've, we have a budget, but that's kind of for our planning, as long as they're coming from the right department, which they all are, they can, they can be used for, for stormwater, so...
I just, I just kind of worry because, you know, we go out another two weeks and then another two weeks, that's, it's gonna start raining in two months. So that's, that's almost a month right there that we lop off. We could, if we found what we needed for it and we already have the funds allocated and said that we could spend it, then you can just go ahead and get it and then go on it.
But we're also need to make sure that we have no findings on our audit at the end of this year, so we're gonna have to balance the speed with our...
I don't see any findings being an issue if they, if council makes a motion that says, yes, go ahead and use that $4,100 towards this project, the monies that have been allotted, and go ahead and do that, then, then we're fine. We don't have to do an actual budget amendment document, because like I was explaining, the money's already in the right department, we're just redirecting it, and that doesn't have to be...
How about the, sorry, I'm still looking on this, getting the election cost?
That will come at the very end of the year. And we do have a big election this year, so it will probably all be used.
Yeah, even if they're uncontested, we still have to pay the costs associated with it. Okay, well, so what I'm hearing is that if you're not concerned about audit thing, if the council wanted to submit a motion to expand the funds from the sources noted in tonight's conversation and authorize the mayor to ensure that it's dedicated to these projects, I see. Go for it. Simple motion.
I would like to make a motion that, that we use the funds that, the $4,100 that were allocated tonight to start the process and get the show on the road for the, for the Storm Drainage Project 2017.
Mr. Daly submitted a motion for the council to consider to allocate funds in the amount noted, $4,100, I believe, as stipulated by Mr. Parsons, and initiate implementation of those funds in the projects noted in 2017. So with that, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any additional commentary?
That, obviously, just a quick look that I looked on, this can... That, obviously, just a quick look that I looked on this can, we can do this again at the next city council meeting to get more money.
You could.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. At least we get the ball rolling.
Sure.
Okay, any last comments?
Well, I'll throw my name out there. If John needs some help, um, Josh, give me a call.
Okay.
So I don't mind helping out.
But now as far as the compensation part for the council member, we'd want to make sure.
Oh, if we're talking compensation, yeah, that might be a different channel.
No, no, no. I'm not talking to council. I'm talking to volunteers and.
Okay, duly noted for public record. All right, then with that, let's put it to a vote. All in the papers say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, oh, you said aye, Mike?
Yes.
All righty, then are there any opposed? See, that motion was unanimous and is therefore carried. All right, well then, effective. Now, let's deal briefly with item number two. Council report on closure of the branch disposal pile at sewer plant. Yes, Mr.?
First, I went down again today and looked all over that junk that I had before.
Yeah.
The first thing I would think we should do is either rent, buy, or get somebody to loan us a chipper. Start with a chipper because of the fact that the chips would be easy to get with.
Well, we recall that Mr. Parsons was going to do some research on a device. What did you call it, Mike?
Belly grinder.
A belly grinder. And unfortunately, I did not get a call back from him and I dropped the ball on it. Sorry.
Okay. Well, see, that would accomplish what you just said. If we were successful in acquiring such a thing through rent or otherwise, it might be an ideal solution. But I can tell you that it's, as of yesterday, we were still, we'd installed one post and we were going to attach a chain and we were going to acquire the chain. Do we have the chain?
Um, John found in the shop a wire rope that he thought would work, that would save us from having to purchase the chain. So he was working on that today. I wasn't here when he left, so I. Uh oh. Is that tickling you over there?
I have a steel cable that we can use also if he did not find one.
You have a steel cable. That's what you're describing.
I have no idea. He called it a wire rope. I don't know what that is.
I'm not sure what it is either, but in any event, simple is sometimes good because chain is.
Have we, have we put that out yet in sewer bills or whatever that we were going to close that or?
We haven't, we haven't sent out any sewer bills, but it has been up on the shop. It's been on the website. It's been on the website and it's been in the paper. It's been in three places so far. We're still, we're still doing it.
And so yesterday, we had one person come and drop stuff off.
So the chain's not up yet, huh?
He may have had it up. He may have had it up today. I know he was trying to get it up today.
Well, I might be curious if we drive over after the meeting to see. But all right, but it is, just with regard to maybe solving it with a chipper, I don't know that it's within our means of affordability to get our city employee to do that because that's a monstrous project.
Don't we go like a Boy Scout group or something like that in the area?
Ooh, that would be the interesting app.
You can find another group of Boy Scouts to feed a chipper.
They would be in the chipper. No, you're right. That was an evil idea.
Oh.
I, I mean, I have a couple of ideas of things that I could check into. I can check into some of the same stuff that Mike is talking about. I know in the past, I've run across some old bills from some people that the city has hired previously to come and do a similar type thing is what Mike's talking about. Where they have a big bin that would chop it all up and they take it away. So I can make, make some phone calls there. Also, I know that the city of Shehake, Centralia. Shehalest. Oh, now I have to check whichever, whichever one email works for. Is that Centralia? Okay. They, they like having chips because they use it in their sewage treatment. And they might be willing to, if I called them, if I said, hey, look at all this stuff we've got. You want to work together? And you could have all the chips if you help us get rid of this. Then, you know, we might be able to work something out. I mean, I can, I can look into some of that stuff if council asks me to do that.
Centralia has a huge one. I mean, they'll go down the street and trim off branches and, I mean, almost the same time the machine goes down the street, they're cutting down branches and feeding them in and they're done.
And, and we do have an agreement with Centralia, with all the cities in, in the county to share services. And so it would still cost us something to do it probably, but it's something that they might benefit from as well. So they might be interested in working out a deal with us.
It's a lot easier when it's not in the pile.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But we're also talking about renting a backhoe or an excavator or something to do some work. So it might be something we could time. At the same time, but if you want me to go, I'll look into that.
I know that right now we have a big pile and we need to deal with that, but in the future, if we could figure out a way to receive the branches, chip the branches, sell the stuff and have it a convenience for the, for the citizens and possibly make some revenue, if we could start brainstorming that, I think it'd be a good idea also.
Okay, duly noted. Okay. So you're going to continue to pursue the belly grinder, Mike?
Yes, I will.
Okay, if you do that, then we'll explore Centralia options there. I'm not going to hold out a lot of hope for that because we share services, but the price tag is usually what we discover into more than we can afford. But we'll try it.
The guy, the guy that I'm talking with, he was the one that the county hired and then he took the chips to Centralia.
Did he?
Hello?
Okay, well, well, there's hope tied still in. I think we will, should make the call to the Clean Air Agency just to see if we put it all in a big pile. We had two hundred and fifty people show up with hot dogs and marshmallows and it would be a giant marshmallow roast.
The recreational fires are okay.
That's right. So.
It's not, we have a bird bat on right now, so.
Okay, anyway, that's, we treated that topic with enough dignity, but, okay.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
I will tell you that the county has rented that belly, belly grinder, I think it is. I don't know. It was belly chipper or whatever it's called. The chipper?
Yeah, it's a chipper. They've been very.
Yeah, and I don't know all. I'm just saying that we have done that and I could kind of maybe pass that on to Eric Martin to see if we'll be able to, any assistance. I can't guarantee anything and I don't know the logistics, but.
I can tell you, Gary, that the generous use of that chipper is what's enabled us to engage in this program for, what, four or five years?
That's different than the belly.
Oh, oh, I was thinking.
So, well, I'll just, I'll just let Eric know that what you guys are thinking about and then maybe the county will be able to assist you somewhat. I can't promise anything, but whatever we can do will be.
Thank you for that. I just think that it was the smaller version.
You know what? Very welcome to be, but I'll, maybe Eric can, say, let him do some brainstorming, say he can help out the city.
And, you know, maybe we could find some funding if it would be of help. All right, thank you.
And you're welcome to our city hall meeting anytime.
Okay, so with that, then let's proceed to our next agenda. Now, we put this on the agenda so it can create this conversation. Council to discuss possible need for a volunteer group to assist with park projects.
We talk about that a lot.
We do.
Boy, we talked about trying to generate some volunteerism by signage or somehow, but I don't know that it's, it's worked at all.
I know that the Visions for Vader group is alive and well. They're, they've got their, their, their guidelines, regulations, ready for presentation. Date is on the, in the offing.
And we officially filed for the IRS five oh one C three.
And that's been applied for. And that group is going to be looking for projects to do. And so, good night, Gary. Thank you so much.
What about, as the sheriff was talking about, what about work projects?
Yeah, with work release from inmates. We've used those in the past and they've become so logistically difficult that it is more cost prohibitive and manpower intensive than it's worth. Because you're required to send individual or individuals up to pick up the inmates. Then you have to have people with them during the entire time, then provide them food during the day. Not to mention, they, they were always asking for things, which is another topic. And then you get to transport them back. And they aren't allowed to engage in certain activities that require them to use equipment that they could do harm to themselves or others. So I've used them maybe eight or 10 times since I was a mayor, but over time you lose the energy from the people who are willing to be with them. So that's my life experience, using inmates to come and help. Now, maybe there's somebody else here who's willing to engage in it on the council. And if you were determined, certainly it's something we could look into. But I'm not highly energized, but.
There we go. I'll watch him. If I understand correctly, the park board's not ready yet to set up volunteers to get this done.
No.
What are you looking at? Are you looking at me?
They're not. Yes.
I think I can help a little bit with that just because I get to listen to all the park board meetings. They have been, their hands have been tied a little bit the first part of this year because we've been making them focus on the comprehensive plan update and putting together a plan, a five-year plan or whatever. And so they're at the point now where they're making decisions about what they want to get accomplished before the end of the year. And to get, they're just chomping at the bit. They're ready to get out there and get their hands dirty and do, do some actual projects. And so, yes, they are coming, they're coming up on that. They have a meeting on the thirty first and then they have another one, I think, two weeks after that. And they are hoping to have a list together of projects that they definitely want to try to get done. And then it sounded to me from, and you were at, the reason I'm looking at you is because you were at that, that meeting, at least at the last half of it. But it sounded to me like maybe they were trying to get some projects together and maybe setting dates for working on a specific project and advertising a date and inviting people to come and help. Help us paint the jail or help us weed something or help us lay bark or, you know, whatever that project is for the day. I don't know. Did you get that sense that that might be a good way to do it?
I did and I didn't.
Okay.
They, they want to do the projects. They know the projects. They have the list. But they don't know how to reach out to all of us. There's the problem.
Okay.
There's the problem. I think we need, if I don't, may I speak? I think we need a Friends of the Parks. And I'll just use that as a group of people that if the park board, if Polo called and said, hey, we're going to do bark on Saturday. We could use ten. We could use whatever. I think that's where Friends of the Park would get together. I don't know that being around and hanging out at their meetings isn't what, you know, is going to happen. But as they're doing, they have so many projects to do. I mean, the mark is just one, you know, of painting the jail and et cetera.
It's important to remember.
They have a moneymaker down there if they do it right.
But they can't get to that Andy because they're still working on their plan. And then they're trying to do their little projects to keep them all engaged. Or, you know, they're wanting to get some little stuff done before the end of the year because we haven't done anything all year long. I mean, nothing. I mean, I mean, the water is sitting right there at the gate. I mean, McMurphy Park is still, you know, a great moneymaker for the, for the city. It's huge. Security could be handled for the park next year with the camp posts. I mean, Jason's served on the board. You've served on the board. Mike's served on the board. I've served. We all have. Reggie and Linda, we know what it takes to get it done. And you just, it's hard reaching out there and getting people to join you.
Yeah, and it's important to note that the park board members, as good-hearted as they are, it's not their job to do the tasks. It's, they identify them and if there's a take it item, it comes with the council for your confirmation. It's tricky. But in years past, we have formed a subcommittee. It's the action element of the park board. And it's been positive, but it's hard to keep people plugged in and energized. You get three or four months go by and they're busy and they have lives to live. So it's an ongoing challenge. I, I should add here just for public attention that on September ninth, it's the annual National Day of Service and the city of Vader always gets targeted for volunteers. Gaslock School District has indicated they're going to have twenty juniors or seniors here on September ninth. And we're already lining up projects and some of those could involve painting. It's non-harmful things. And I would anticipate they're probably, as is typical, going to have maybe thirty or forty others. And last year, they targeted widows who needed help and then they came in and like buzzsaws and did a great job on those that were selected. So the park board could pick some projects that, and they only are here for two or three hours. But you get that many people and hands involved. And of course, we're looking for volunteers in that regard from within the community too. We've not gotten much response in that regard either in those days, but it's going to happen. So maybe that's something we could do in the short term, address some of the needs of the park board. I throw that out. But knowing that the visions of Vader group is, they're going to be out there and when they get their bylaws and set away and get the official documentation for the state, we're going to have another big meeting. And I think that maybe that's a forum that could create that little group. What did you call it?
Friends of the Park.
Friends of the Park. So there. That's all we can add. Any thoughts? Any additional commentary? Okay, all right, then. We're an hour and a half in. We're at number four. Council to discuss signage and speed bump options on Eighth and D Streets. So council wanted it on the agenda and obviously it's an ongoing concern.
I can report one thing on that is that we haven't been able to contact the school yet because the two main people have been on vacation.
Yes.
I can talk to them about signage and stuff. They won't be back yet until next week. So we should have, get, be able to get some kind of information next week about signage.
And what the school's going to do.
Yeah, yeah. If they can put some on, put some of those signs back up that they used to have up.
That's true. That could contribute a solution to the problem.
I do, I, I know just from our, our past conversations with the church that the speed bump option, especially with the streets. Forty feet wide is pretty high. Let's go around it.
Yeah, we beat that horse. We did. Yeah, credit coming.
I was just wondering if maybe get the school board to come out to one of the next council meetings. Because you can't really discuss it until you hear from them anyways and maybe kind of collaborate altogether and see what two of you can figure out together.
That's an option. I think they would say yes. That's an option. I think they would say yes to that.
I'd agree with you.
Okay, we'll put that down.
You know, one of the things that I did when I had speeders in Roseville was I took care of it myself, and maybe that's, you know, if we could talk to these people and tell people...
I'm not going to lay in the street.
Up to them.
Yeah, well, like, sometimes that works. The apostolic commentatus groups are...
Anytime I've ever said, "Oh yeah," I just get obscenities. So, no, no one cares because it's not their house, kind of thing, and it's not their kids, not their streets, yeah.
But, but my sense is that there's probably more that we can do. And I know with the input that you've heard from our sheriff's department, now it might be a very opportune time to approach them and invite them to engage in a little more discreet surveillance of the problem. Would you think that that would...
Well, that's what I've been asking for in these states, the sergeant had stated that they have... I watched the earlier, every single night, and I, the only time I ever seen was they're sitting right there.
Yeah, by the school, right. No, I think there are strategies involved in that that we could request, and I am certainly willing enough to do that. So, maybe if you don't mind talking afterwards, or maybe another day, we could use your, your location, if you don't mind.
No.
Okay, stay tuned.
Yeah.
Thank you. I mean, as far as, as far as anything on the street, you know, I was thinking, you know, a lot of places have them, like, we call them turtles in the middle of the road, like a...
Rumble dogs?
Yeah, rumble dogs, a bunch of those, you know, maybe 50 feet in front of the stop sign, or, or whatever, just to kind of halfway down the street, just to kind of let people know that, you know, that it's a slow zone. That's the only thing that I was kind of trying to think of, what kind of a, something that's kind of like, make you think about not going fast, that's not thousands of dollars, like speed bumps and stuff, but... That's the only, the only option I ever, I ever thought of, that would work. That would...
Wouldn't we just have some of those sandwich boards with, with the kids walking? Would, do you think that would slow them down and put them on all four corners or something? Those kid, those shouldn't cost too terribly much to show that there's kids there and...
I think some of the school would consider it.
Yeah, the school's going to, the school's going to probably do most of that.
I do have to say that the white lines that John painted out there, maybe a minute help.
They're small.
Yeah, right, right.
Just one more thing to help.
Yeah. Last thing, maybe not last, but the thought is that citizen involvement, to the extent that they can get a license plate, is something that I don't think we've enjoyed so far. So, if any of you do witness that and can safely get a license plate, the sheriff's department, I mean... If you see the same car, it's a bad...
But the thing with that is the sheriff's department, it's an infraction, and it's not done within their presence, technically legally, it wouldn't be done about it.
They've said that before, but information sometimes creates opportunities that you wouldn't have anticipated.
You see that, you see that vehicle, and then let them know, kind of get on them.
Yeah.
Whatever, you have an neighbor that don't like you.
Yeah.
That's true.
That's why we approve.
Yeah, sure, absolutely, good point. All right, but anyway, I believe in collecting information, and information leads to sometimes fortuitous outcomes. All right, on that. So, so we'll definitely, the takeaway here is that we'll contact the school district, number one. And number two, we'll invite the sheriff's deputies to engage in perhaps some more sensitive, or not quite best done, but surreptitious activities.
Targeted?
Targeted, yes. Target practice. No strike that. So, council to consider use of animal funds for spay neutering of pet cats. Speed bumps and cats.
I can try to quickly explain this. What, what has happened is that we have, I've reached out to, the lady's name is Twyla, that runs the program, the Cats Meow Spay Neuter adoption project, that does the spay or neutering of feral cats for $15. That's an administrative fee, it basically covers the gas and stuff to get the animals to where they need to go and back. And so, she only charges that $15 for feral cats. If they are a pet cat, then males are an additional $15 on top of that, and females are an additional 25 on top of that. They do lots of other services, offer lots of other things, but they all are a minimum of $15. What we're running into, at least at City Hall, is once we started getting it out to the public that the, that the city has money for the cats, we're, we've had some phone calls of people, "Well, I saved this cat, and, because it was feral, and I've been feeding it now, and since I've been feeding it now, the Cats Meow place doesn't consider it feral anymore, they consider it a pet, but it still needs to get fixed, and will the city pay for it?" And I was like, "Oh, okay, it's not such a fine, a, a, there's a lot of gray area in there." And also recognizing that pet cats are also contributing, combined with the feral cats, to more cats in the community. I am suggesting to council, or asking council, if they would be willing to allow a $15 fee to be paid for any cat that gets taken in through this program. With the, with the council, that same $500 that we have set aside, we wouldn't go over that in the year. That would still be the budget, but we would just open it up to be the $15 fee would be paid for any cat that's taken in through this program for somebody who lives here in the city of Vader. They would have to come in, and they would actually have to pay, pay it themselves first, and then come in and get reimbursement from the city in order to do that. And we talked with Twyla about doing a voucher program, but that became very complex, and trying to know who's a resident and who's not, and, you know, whatever. And so, would council be willing to open that, the cat money up to pets as well as feral cats?
Do you have a comment for the public, or council care to hear?
Right.
Okay, go for it.
I have raccoon problems down the way, really bad. And I know the guy is feeding them, it's over there by Mason Hall, across there, then, then gray duplex. The guy that talks to every, the animals and stuff.
Tommy, unfortunately, this is an agenda given only for cats.
Those are probably living cats.
Is it eating cats?
Yeah.
That's serious, too.
It is, yeah. No question, but it's tough enough to focus on cats.
Yeah, we've got an F line, whole population of cats.
Sure. Another comment?
I have a comment. There is a big difference between a feral cat and a pet cat. When we do feral cats, they get ear tipped, you know?
Right.
You know, so that's the whole purpose, is when you do a feral cat, they ear tip them so other people are aware that this cat has been altered. So, if we put out a trap and we get a cat and it's ear tipped, you know? We know, oh, don't bring this cat in, and we release them. You know, if you're doing people's personal cats that are leaving their home, they're going to want that cat to be ear tipped.
She doesn't ear tip. She doesn't ear tip that cat.
Right, we're saying to open it up to people who say it isn't like pets. You understand what I'm saying? So people are going to have to understand that if they're bringing in their pet cats, that their cats are going to be ear tipped.
No, they're not.
But then that wouldn't be, then it would be more than a $15 fee.
Right, we would pay the $15 fee, which every cat has to pay.
Right.
The feral cats, you don't have to pay anything else. But if it was a, someone's pet cat that they brought in, that they could handle, the Texan stuff could handle, they will charge them the additional as well. But the city is, I'm asking if council would be willing to pay just the administrative portion, just that $15, and then the owner would still have to pay the rest.
Right, because people would have to know that if they're, you know, if it's a feral cat, if there's a reason why we ear tip them, it's because this way we're aware that we don't take in a second every time.
Yeah, they wouldn't, she wouldn't ear tip them if they were a pet cat. She would do the belly tattoo, which is what, what she does on, what they do for the pets, and...
Yeah, but there's the only way to identify a feral cat. It's only by what the people are telling you, like they're bringing it.
Yeah. Well, and that's the thing, is that the people at the Cats Meow, they can make the determination whether it's feral or pet. That's, that's not something that I can decide here at City Hall, and so, that's...
She's not going to make that determination, is she?
And it's difficult sometimes for her to make that.
Of course, she's going to say, "Is this a feral cat? It gets ear tipped." That's how it is. She, you go there, she has over 50 cats that she ekes in at a time. You know, I've done a lot of feral cats, and I did a lot of T and O when I lived in New York. This is what we did, you know, and the only way you know it's a feral cat is because the person that brings it is telling you it's a, you know? So you can't say, "Well, they're going to determine," and she's going to do a test.
Well, and that's, that's another reason why it would be nice if council was willing to do just $15 for any cat that is from the city of Vader, and then all cats. And then that way, we're, we're helping everybody equally.
But people need to be aware that that cat's going to be ear tipped.
Well, she's, she's only going to ear tip the feral cats, yeah.
You know, I'm glad to start off that...
People like, "Oh, I'm bringing my cat in," and then they just say, "Oh, it's feral," and then find out that the cat is misinformed, they, you know, people that...
That's, that's outside of our, our, we don't have any control over that. That's between them and the cat place, so, yeah.
How much?
Yeah, but you have the same, same...
I better moderate this. I know it's easy to become an interactive interrogative process here. It's council meeting, and they're the ones that allow or agree to public input on it. We do, and Mike, did you have a comment?
Yeah, how much is in our budget?
Five hundred dollars.
We still have $594, or $494.
$494, so this is, this is what I would say, is put my name on a list, and I'm sure there's other people in town that would be willing to put their name on a list. Let's take that, that all pay for, if somebody catches a cat, I'll pay the $15 myself. Let's take that $594 and put it towards the storm drains, and not have to worry.
There's a lot of cats in this city, Mike.
Nice thinking outside the box there, Mike.
There's a lot of cats, that way that up in here.
We only got, we've only got $594 anyway, so...
Well, that's, that's a lot of cats, though, Mike, too.
That is a lot of cats, and that's why I'm saying, you know, there's, you can even put Sarah and Trent's name on the list, put my name on the list, and we'll find enough people that will take care of these cats when, when they do it. I mean, the cat that came on my porch, it cost me $160 to get it fixed, and...
Let's set it up through the city, and then, Jill, you can collect vouchers and give them to them when they bring the cat back.
So, Mike, when people come and bring their receipts in to get reimbursed, I'll just forward them to you.
Is he, is he serious?
Oh, I am.
It's a logistics nightmare, is what the, that's starting to be.
Yeah, well, Mike, that's created a whole lot of, I, I'm raising an interest.
Well, the issue is, is I don't think that it's something that the city should have to take care of because it's actually, it's the, the pet owners that are irresponsible. So, that means that we all have to pay for it. I just think that's wrong. I think that money can go into doing the storm drains, and we can, you know, find people that want to help out with this cat issue. But it being part of the city, I don't think it should be.
Yeah, but the council did approve, is it a budget item, so, yeah. But, well, there were a couple of other comments that wanted to be heard. You want to entertain, given the time, any additional comments? I heard, see, I had a shaking.
Jason's just being mean.
I just had, I just wanted to say...
Oh, I didn't even know who was coming.
I just wanted to say really quick, I did, I talked to Twyla on the phone today for about an hour. She said that about 40 cats could get fixed on that budget. I'm already feeding about 20, just in 8th and D Street.
Feral cats.
Feral, these are, I don't believe anybody owns them, they come to me, they're hungry. That's just on that little corner. Two cats can produce 30 cats a year. So, you know, the longer that we wait, the worse it could get, of course, because it's already pretty bad. And I know that over the duplexes up at A Street, that's the biggest issue over there.
Yep, and the raccoon feeder is feeding cats, too, we know, so, it's not lost on us. Seriously, it's a council's meeting, if you want to do one more comment, Scott's been very busy.
Can I say what I'm going to say first? I, I think it's a great idea. I think nine, half the people that live in this town moved in here probably in the last 20 years, and, and probably half or more of the cats were already here when these people moved here. So, it's something that is the city's problem. If we don't get a hold of it, it's just going to get bigger and bigger and bigger and never change. So, I believe that this is a program that we should start, and see what kind of excitement it generates. If we get, if we get 40 cats done, that's, that's, that's like 400 baby cats that we don't have to worry about, you know, so...
Yeah, and we can, I mean, if people want to donate to it, we can increase that fund and do even more.
Yeah, that $500 isn't going to get us very much ditch work done, and I think it's going to do a lot of good citywide on the cat problem, so... I make a motion that we open up the funds for, that are set aside for the, the pet situation in town to the public, and allow $15 per cat, no matter if it's feral or if it's pet, to help with this population problem.
Okay.
For Vader residents only.
Vader residents.
We've heard a motion submitted by Mr. Daley to approve the expenditure of the amount that we have allocated for utilizing the services of, what's it called?
Oh, Cats Meow.
Cats Meow. For citizens of, residents of Vader only. Can I capture that? Okay, then, do we have a second for that motion?
Oh, second, and third, and fourth, and fifth.
Multiple seconds for that, from the unit center. So, any additional discussion? Hearing that? I'd like to hear what Scott has to say. We'd like to hear it.
First of all, the, the equipment to trap the cats. Is there a way to, I don't know if county animal control has something that can assist on a loaner basis, or if we can get donations from city businesses to, to buy a series of traps that you can, can do more than a couple of cats at a time?
We have the answer to that question.
Yes.
So, there may be multiple answers.
That's a different topic.
So, would we want to hear the answer?
I have the answer to the trapping, the traps.
Yeah.
Donna Rogers.
Well, she, she was the original?
Yes, she was, yeah, she was, and she does have some in her house.
Okay, and she's here in Vader?
She is.
And I have a trap.
And I can make connection with her tomorrow.
Okay, yeah.
She does rent, please.
For a deposit, the refundable deposit, and I think Twyla might also have some.
Who, who'd you say the first one? Hallie?
No, the, the county animal shelter does rent them as well. I believe it's for a refundable deposit, yeah.
That might be a good side business for someone in town.
The city.
We need to start at her house and have 40 cats just like that.
Right, yeah.
Just go in this feeding time and catch them all at one time.
That's kind of my thought, you get 10 traps out there, and then you grab them all.
Yeah, okay. Yes, we still have a motion on the table, and so, Mr. Wells?
How are we going to control them? With a chain around their neck? Can everybody come in the city hall and get a chain?
You get a chain up with your cat?
$15 paid?
I don't see it for a cat.
Their ears get clipped when...
Their ears get clipped when, that's how we know if they've been spayed.
And the only other thing is that you trap somebody's pet and not knowing that you're trapping somebody's pet and you take it.
If it's an outside cat and it's on your property, you, you can trap it and, but you got to bring it back and you got to let it go. That's, that's the thing about, about taking your animals in, feral or not, you got to take them back to where you picked them up and let them go.
All righty, okay, we're very close to a vote here.
One more.
Then, there are no additional commentary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Aye.
We have one opposed, so the vote was four in favor, one opposed, the motion still carries. Okay, all right, well.
Aye, Mike.
So, yeah. Thank you, Mike, for your generosity on that. All right, let's, last item, council to consider resolution fifteen dash twenty seventeen, this is a contract for codification services. You've dealt with this before, it should be a very straightforward, hopefully, and for council, Mr. Wilson.
I would like to take and have more time to reread this and consider it for what the cost is against the city.
The cost is the same as what council already approved in the budget.
Yeah.
This is the exact bid that council already approved, we just got it in a contract form. That's it, it's exactly the same as what you already approved.
Clock is ticking.
Yeah, we basically approved this a year ago, so we were just waiting for the, the, the funds, verify that we would have the funds, and we do.
This is a major step forward for the city of Vader.
Leona wasn't here and so she's out, she don't know what we talked about in the past. Could you explain to her a little bit further?
What the codification is.
Yeah.
Basically what it is, is it's putting all of our ordinance, ordinances together in like a outline format so that everything having to do with one topic is all in one place, and they're given numbers to find each section. Right now, if we have a, a question about, about fireworks, we have to go and dig through every single ordinance that we have and see if it says anything about fireworks. What codification does is it takes anything that's been passed and is still active in an ordinance and putting all the fireworks items together under one topic and one heading so that we can find all the firework regulations. And all the zoning regulations will be in one section and, and it makes it so that you can find the information and that it's clear and that if you have contradictory ordinances, that will be caught in this process and will be given back to council to make corrections and basically it makes everyone's life a thousand times easier.
Nine thousand times easier.
Nine thousand times easier. It's expensive to do the first time, but then every time you do an ordinance, you just have to add it into the, that's part of the services, if you add it in to the codification. The, the city attorneys that we've had the last several years, our planners, our engineers have all been begging us to do this because they waste so much time, having to search through fifty-five million ordinances to find all the regulations and make sure that we're following everything that we're supposed to be doing when we make a decision. So that's what codification is, is codifying or putting it to a number system, kind of like a, like a outline for each topic. And so council had approved, the bids that came, we got, we had two bids and they were both very comparable. One of them offered a free year of online posting of the codification so the public can have access to it as well and so that's the one council chose. And then they decided that they increased property taxes in the budget for this year and next year to cover the costs of this over a two-year time period, so it's been budgeted for.
So after the initial nine thousand dollars and one year waived, is it five hundred dollars a year? No matter how many ordinances we do or?
Um, I'm not sure.
That's the online fee.
Is that the online cost?
That's the online fee. Yeah, they keep it online for us, they host it, that way business people that come to town, they can refer to it online and know exactly what they're getting into if they come to the city, so they maintain the website and everything.
Any comment from the public?
That's nice. I think codification is a, a great idea, but is, is now a really good time to spend nine thousand? It's not really just nine thousand dollars because there's, you go over three hundred pages, it's twenty-four dollars a page and there's other little fees on here that it might jack that up a little bit higher. I don't know how much money you guys have to spend, but.
Do we have that much money to spend?
Well, I understand you have that much money, but do you have other projects that might also need, like the, the storm drain and the ditches and the roads and other things? I mean, I have nine thousand dollars in the bank, but I'm not going to spend on something I don't need, maybe I'm going to spend on something I absolutely have to have. So that's my only comment, is just it's nine thousand dollars plus, it's not just nine thousand dollars, and we have a lot of need, so.
We might as well just take nine thousand dollars from the Perk Strayer thing.
Well, the, this, this project over time will actually pay for itself by decreased attorney's fees, decreased city employee fee, time, and on and on and on, so. And, and when we, when we approved the property tax increase last year, it was specifically for this project.
Well, you can't use those much of other things that you don't have.
We, we could, but that's not exactly, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel right spending, spending the money on something else. We're trying to get this done for, since I've been sitting here.
Oh, excuse me, this, we get attention, we want to. Do you want to hear any other commentary?
Yes, I would.
Does that mean that you raise taxes every, every year to stay running?
No, no, that's, that's it. Now, there, there was, we've, we actually discussed not decreasing property tax after it was paid for. I know, have you ever heard that before? And, and the discussion was, can we do that? And everyone was surprised, so we, we haven't, we, but we haven't, we haven't finalized that, of course, that wasn't.
You'd have to wait until that budget season, when you set the tax.
But anyway, no, it's a one-time fee, it gets paid for and it's done. Yeah, to pay for the online. I would like to make a motion. I move to approve resolution number fifteen two zero one seven, authorizing the mayor to execute the professional services contract with municipal code corporation substantially in the form attached to the resolution.
Further motions submitted by Mr. Shai to approve that resolution fifteen dash twenty seventeen as read. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second, aye.
A second by Mr. Parsons. Now's the time for additional commentary.
I was a part of this conversation back when we decided to do this and, and I still agree that it's, it's a good thing for the city and it's something that it'll help the city run smoother in the future, especially with all the different improvements and things that are happening in the city now. It's a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely, we may have, we may have an ordinance right now that covers the pop-up buildings that Judy was talking about, but it's buried in a box somewhere, so. This would, this would solve that problem to know what we have.
And I've heard a lot of public comment on not having information out on the web and this is a perfect way to get the information out on the web, on our face, on our site so that people can see it.
Well, my personal experience is that I would agree, echo the comments of supporting it that you've heard. We're one of the few communities in the entire state of Washington that doesn't have this and we're a throwback to the past and it does in fact cost a lot of time and exasperation and I think, as you say, would result ultimately in cost savings for the community. So I'm extremely supportive of this action. Any other comments? I fear you're seeing none, let's put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed by the same?
No.
I heard one aye, so by my count, that was four in support and one in opposition, the motion carries. And so as mayor, who is responsible for the administration of this community, I, as a matter of public record, commend this city council in doing something that has never been done in the history of the city of Vader before. And I'm going to. Thank you. With that, we've covered all the agenda items, so we're going to close this meeting adjourned at eight oh one P M.